Have a great show. It is on you. Welcome to Hip Hop and Politics.
Let's do this. The dedication get different. Repetition with the mission got the gift and if you need it, call me. It's the whole dealer, the self talker, Sir Dominique Jordan, the prolific one, and my lovely co-host.
This is the baked mac mommy, the collard green kid, the butter peeking nigger Ricky. You should listen when I'm speaking. Welcome back, everybody.
Welcome, welcome to Hip Hop and Politics. Yes, and if you're at home watching, please share. Tell a friend to tell a friend. We're going to have an amazing conversation today with the school board candidate, uh, school board candidates of 2021. I'm really excited and I want to give everyone the opportunity to be able to introduce themselves. So who would like to start?
Yeah, who would like to go first?
I'm in the upper left hand.
Let's do it.
Good evening. My name's Molly Henderson and I would like to thank Don and Nina for this opportunity and for Jen getting the ball rolling with this. I did take this afternoon and watch your program on, uh, with the police and, and the chief and very interesting, very interesting. I think he was, uh, they were pretty forthcoming. And my situation with the school board running is a little different than my compatriots here. I am running for a two-year term. Um, I am running to fill the unexpired term of Randy Carney who passed away. So my term would be for two years. Everyone else is running for a four-year term. And, uh, like in the situation with school board, like the district justice, you can do what's called cross filing, which means you can run on the Republican and the Democratic, uh, tickets or ballots because the position is to be nonpartisan. We are supposed to be doing what's best for the kids and, and I think we all have that in mind and, uh, are we having timing? Is somebody gonna?
Hey, you were good to go.
Over, overextend myself here. Um, I have a long history with Lancaster and, uh, School District of Lancaster and education. I spent many years on East King Street and, uh, it was sort of sad because my kids, uh, my, my son thought that the prison, which looks like a castle, was actually Dutch Wonderland. And, um, he was very confused about that for a long time, but, uh, my, my two children went to, uh, Elizabeth Martin. And then my son went on to McCaskey. My daughter then transferred over to Janus and, um, had her education at Janus. But, uh, I couldn't say enough good things about the School District of Lancaster. Um, my relationship with it more politically was, uh, I was, uh, president of the site council at Wheatland. And we go back a long way with athletics and, uh, McCaskey. And my family was also all educators, teachers. My father was a professor at Millersville and the basketball coach. So, you know, I grew up with Steve Powell. And he, my dad was the coach for a lot of those, uh, those players. And also with, uh, John Mitchell, uh, both my children were wrestlers and my daughter was in, uh, Mitchell's first girls wrestling club. And, uh, he's a great guy. I, I like John a great deal. And as far as my background, I've been an educator and I have come forward to run for office now, uh, because of my public health background and COVID. And I know that there is a big push in the city for lead paint and we'll get all into that another part. I don't want to go all into that now because there, there's just so many issues. But my background is public health and education. I taught at Millersville. I taught elementary ed majors and how to work with young children, spot problems of health in the classroom, from nutritional problems, vision problems to, um, mandated reporting for abuse. Uh, so that and also I was a supervisor for elementary school, uh, student teachers and was out in the classroom. And went to different schools. Um,
We're gonna, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna go on to our next candidate.
Okay, yeah, I, okay, thank you, thank you.
Who, who would like to introduce themselves next?
I'll go next, if that's okay. Hi, uh, my name is Jen Eaton. Um, I am, um, many of you may know, uh, a, a local girl. I grew up and went through the School District of Lancaster, my siblings and I. I was a teen mom that, um, gave birth my senior year of McCaskey and, uh, that taught me, uh, an awful lot. And, and gave me some experience that I, that I carried forward, um, stayed in Lancaster and went to Franklin and Marshall College. And, um, have raised my kids here. My son is now 25. He's graduated, graduated from college too. I'm really proud of him. Um, and I have two young students that are, um, at Elizabeth Martin, um, also. He, uh, they are fourth and fifth graders and spent the better part of the year in the cyber pathways program, um, went back virtually and one of my students has now gone back in person. So, you know, that's just a little bit about my, my background. I live in Lancaster Township, but I, I grew up, um, in the city, um, before moving out here. In fact, lived in, in the southeast. And, um, worked at the Phoenix Academy for this school and community network and really developed, um, you know, a, a connection and, um, a love for the community that, um, you know, I've tried to follow through my passions, my professional experiences. And, uh, and so I'm really grateful to be here because it's, it's the right time to, to pull all these things together, um, and, uh, and, and work for our students. So I'm really grateful to be here and thank you both for having.
Thank you so much.
We definitely appreciate that. Denise.
Well, I know I said I wanted to go next, but I'm not sure I really did. Um, I guess a little bit about myself, Denise Gans. I am a long time, Lancasterian. I guess that's how you say it. I've lived in Lancaster my whole life. I am a city member or city resident. I'm still a city resident. I am, I'm joining or running for school board right now because I, I, I have questions that are probably a lot of people who, questions and concerns, probably, um, a lot of people that are from where I am from that have them. And I would kind of want to be able to provide some type of transparency. So, and be in the rooms, making the decisions or helping with making the decisions and understanding what's going on, on the school board. So I probably have the most work cut out for me because it sounds like everyone else has a little bit more deeper roots in the educational system. Mine are personal. My, um, my mom or my stepmother was a teacher. My dad also worked in the school district for a very, very long time and was a coach as well. Personal, but they are personal. They are a bit personal, but they're not, um, they're not my own personal experiences working in the school district. So, um, I'm just looking forward to, to learning as much as I possibly can about the rules and how the rules are made and the decisions are made for the kids of the School District of Lancaster and making sure that they're being made in the, um, just in, in the right interest of all the kids of the School District of Lancaster. And that's it.
Well, we appreciate you. Thank you. Can we get David next?
Sure. Thank you, Dom. Uh, and thanks for hosting us. Actually, like, I think we should all start by thanking Dom just because he works in the district. And he, like, we work in, uh, in the school board, but like Dom does the real work with the, with the kids.
I appreciate it. It doesn't even feel like work, man. I actually love, this is more work than working with the kids. To be honest with you, they make my day easy, man. They just want to be themselves. They just don't know how to be themselves. We live in a twisted, complex world, right? But this is why we got y'all here. So David, tell us about yourself, man. Tell us why you're qualified.
So my name's Dave Perry. Uh, I've been on the board for the last, uh, four years and hopefully will have the privilege of serving for another four years. By way of background, I've spent like 20 plus years in education in one form or another, working with different, used at different levels from like middle school to high school to now I, I teach college. Uh, and as, as an educator, I, I deeply care about public education. It's like probably the thing I value most in the world and the role it can play in, in communities and the important role that I think like plays in our community in particular. And as an educator, I can sort of cite all the statistics about how education matters. I know all the research. I intellectually like, you know, like know education matters. And that, that educational opportunities can change lives. But I also like deeply feel this personally, um, because education transformed my life, right? Like my story is the story of how education matters. I grew up in this like very small town in southern New Mexico, north of El Paso, Texas. Um, and I was raised by a single mom. She raised three boys on her own. She did not have a college degree. But she would get up before we went to school. She would call us from work to make sure that we'd wake up so that we could get to school. Call to make sure that we were going to school. Call when we got home to make sure that we were doing our homework. And then from that, um, she got three boys all to go to college, like a lawyer, a professor and a, and a software engineer. So it's like, like public education can really matter and it can, and it can transform lives. And I think that's like that story that has driven me to, to work in education and, but I know that like in a district like Lancaster, uh, a lot of students face headwinds and challenges to obtain that education and like headwinds and challenges that I didn't face. Like from one side, like my story is sort of like a success, pull up yourself up by your bootstraps, success story. But I didn't have a lot of the headwinds. I like, I got lucky. I got to play like on the easy level. Whereas our students have to play on a much more difficult level with like chronic underfunding, systemic racism in our communities, sexism, you know, I spoke the language. They were, a lot of our students were in two languages. So we have all these challenges, all these headwinds that we're throwing at our students. And one of the things I really value about being on the board is working to minimize those headwinds and support all our students. So, uh, they can succeed and been doing that for four years. And we can talk about the different ways that's been working and not working the last four years. But I'm looking to keep doing that over the next four years.
Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you for that. Mara, can we get you next or did I pronounce that correctly?
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good. Um, mine, thank, thanks so much for having us. Um, this is our, we were, we were joking before. This is our, our week off. We, we get all excited about the, uh, fourth, fourth Tuesday. Um, but this is great. This is really, uh, a lot of fun and, uh,
Well, if y'all are ever available on the fourth Tuesday, we are always free on Tuesdays.
We are. Absolutely. Have us anytime. You're gonna get sick of us. Let me tell you. Oh gosh. Well, a little bit about me, uh, my name is Mara Cresswell McRan. Um, I guess my, the, the biggest thing is that I'm, I'm a longtime Lancaster resident. I went to Millersville. I grew up in the Midwest, um, ended up going to three different high schools. The third one was Warwick in Lititz, uh, went to Millersville and moved into the city two weeks after I graduated in 1993. And I've been in the school district for the past 29 years. So, um, yeah, I've, I've definitely been here a while. Um, I have three children. They, uh, attended SDOL schools from kindergarten all the way through. My oldest is a sophomore at Pitt. My, uh, my son is a freshman at Temple. And my youngest, my little baby is, uh, 16 and she's a sophomore at, um, McCaskey. And involved in every possible, um, activity that McCaskey offers. And there are a whole lot. So she's a, uh, she's a field hockey player and a basketball cheerleader and unified track runner. And tonight she's at band because we're going to be doing an outside spring concert coming up soon. So, yeah, so it's been, uh, it's been really great. And that's kind of how I got involved. You know, I started out volunteering in their classrooms once a week and, they're all really close in age, obviously. So, so I, I would go in a day and hit everybody's classroom and read with kids and really got, uh, got involved that way. Of course, did a little bit of PTO. And then I was the, the district PAC rep for, um, Buchanan Elementary. And that's when I really got to see how big our district is and, and got to, uh, meet some people. Robin Goodson, actually, I always, uh, she was on PAC. I think a lot of people know her and, uh, Ms. Robin was the most welcoming person ever on PAC. I didn't know a thing about what I was doing and she just kind of brought me in and brought me up to speed. And now we're on the board together and that's, uh, it's such an honor. So, um, yeah, I, my husband and I own a business in the city. So we kind of joke that our lives are all within a two, two mile square of everything. You know, go to work, go to school, live here. We don't get out much, but, uh, it's a great, it's a great place to be. And like, you know, I thought a little bit about how do I express what the past four years have been on school, on school board. And obviously the last year has been completely not what anyone expected. But the one thing that really hit me was I, um, was in at Hamilton Elementary, couple, I guess, um, maybe six weeks ago, reading. While I was in visiting and I was reading with a little kindergartner and he, kindergartners of course are just awesome. And he was, you know, sitting on the floor and his mask on and he had his iPad and we were, he was flipping through his books on his iPad and he read to me and, and I thought, wow, this is great. This would be great if I could do this all the time, right? But the reality of it is when I stepped back, I thought, you know what? Every single thing in that situation was something that I worked on in the past four years. You know, the reading program he was doing was something that we spent a lot of time talking about and, uh, you know, examining and then ultimately the board approves that. His iPad, we had a really, you know, we're rolling out a technology program and then the pandemic hit and we had to get 11,000 iPads for our students. And it was a scramble. You know, how do you pay for that? How do you source those? How do you get those into hands? How do you get internet to people's houses?
How do you service them? Oh my god.
And how do you service them? Which I know you know firsthand. It's been, it's been really interesting. But then also he was in school, you know, this was in February and that was a huge decision for us to make. You know, when do kids come back? When is it safe? You know, some of his classmates were virtual. He was there. The teacher was there. It was, um, and I thought, well, these are the decisions that we make on school board. And they're really hard and they're really big and they're, um, really just important to our whole community. And so I re, I really enjoy it and I, I, I would love to spend another four years serving.
Well, we appreciate your service. Um, you and David said a ton and we definitely appreciate the work that has been done. Um, we're excited for you guys to just share this space with us. Louis, tell us about yourself again, brother. Welcome back.
Yep, it's nice to be back. Um, we, we had a great time the last time we were, we were on. So my name is Louis Morales. I'm currently on the school board. I've been on since June, um, serving along with Mara and David. And it's been a very crazy ride these last couple of months, um, dealing with this pandemic. Definitely, um, I went to school here. I went to Full Inn Reynolds in McCaskey. And while at McCaskey, I was part of the Public Leadership and Service SLC, um, which kind of, uh, reinforced my already interest in politics and, in service. Which led me to, years later though, um, get my bachelor's degree in social work, uh, from Millersville. And then I worked for CAP head, head start, permanently head start in Outdraft Five. Um, and I also work for Justice Works, um, youth care. We work with, uh, kids who are, um, working through the system and have some issues. Um, so my life has been about service for others. And definitely being in that public leadership and service, um, SLC helped reinforce that and, um, gain, it helped me gain more knowledge and more interest in continuing that path. And that's how I got to get on the school board. Um, and I also have four children. Um, two are in the district. The one's a second grader and one's a kindergartner. So he started off his year, um, with this pandemic. He didn't get to enter his classroom till late October. Um, by the time he was able to come in and, and he's also, um, has autism. So I have an interest in that side of the equation. Um, being a parent with children that ha, with disabilities is something that, um, has opened my eyes to see the inequality just in that alone. Um, because those children are forced to, at times to adapt to them, to the normal children. Um, and so they have to catch up and we sometimes don't provide all the tools that they need to even try to do that. Um, and so that's kind of where I'm at and trying to get that, you know, inequality in that end. And then also the inequality just all around, just, you know, I'm Spanish speaking. My parents are Puerto Rican. And so, you know, I know about that as well. And we, you know, a lot of our district is, um, families are Spanish speaking. And so, you know, sometimes they miss out on things and, you know, always communication is always something that we can all get better at. And so, you know, helping to get that through as well.
Hey, um, before, first I want to say thank you, Louis. I appreciate that. Seriously, man, I appreciate that. Before we even keep going through this, if you're watching a stream right now, if you missed these introductions, if you just joined us right now, please share the stream. Because they just gave some amazing introductions. I want to just recap it a little bit. We have some parents here with us tonight of, of kids that are in the district. You understand what I'm saying? Like we have products of our school district here. We have past PTO parents and like this stuff matters, guys. Like this stuff really, really matters. And I'm not talking to, obviously the people sitting here with us tonight on the Zoom, we know it matters. But to our viewers at home, right? I just really want them to understand that this stuff comes full circle. These are the type of people that you want to vote for, for your school board. Like seriously y'all. So, um, Nina, hit them with the first question.
How do you, well, actually you guys already answered the first question in your introductions. Thank you. Now that I'm thinking about it, something you didn't answer in any of your introductions was if appointed, what is the first area that you would work on to improve upon?
Think about it. And again, y'all, if you're watching, share the stream.
Do you guys just want us to respond or do you wanna, do you want to ask like whoever?
No, you can respond, Denise. If you feel inclined. We want it to be an open forum and everyone to be able to discuss.
Well, honestly, for, for that particular question, I don't want to, um, I don't want to try to give an answer on one, any one particular topic because I feel like, um, within, within our community, or at least from the community needs that I've heard of, there are a lot of topics that I would like, I would like to know more about. I would like to know more about while I'm sitting at the table and understanding what decisions can be made before I could even say, this is what I would want to tackle first.
What is the most important or most pressing to you? What, what needs the most attention right now?
Other, can I say this? Other than the pandemic, because obviously we know getting our kids back in school safely is probably the most important thing, right? But like in your opinion, you're a product of this district. You seen things. You have children in this district. Talk, talk to us, Denise.
I, I would say, I would say education being spread equally across the district, the same education being spread equally across the district. Because I, I've lived as the School District of Lancaster from all different angles. Like I said, my, both of my parents were di, played different roles in the district. As well as I have children in the district and both of my children go to Elizabeth Martin or one is at Elizabeth Martin. Now the other is in McCaskey. But, um, I've seen different levels of education at different schools, different levels of standards at different schools where there shouldn't, there, there, there shouldn't be a different standard. It should be, it should be the same education for, for, for everyone.
There is, there are so many issues. I, I think the first thing I would want to tackle, and this is not about the, it is tangential to the, the pandemic, is what is the status of the students currently? How many have lost ground? How many have remained the same? And maybe some kids actually thrived in this. But what it, what is the starting point, um, when, when they return?
Gosh.
Cause it's not the same. If, if, things have been different for the last year and where are they? And where are the teachers? There's, there's a lot to peel back here and see where we're starting.
Are you talking about in a mental, are you talking about in a mental or an academic standpoint?
I think all of it. I mean, I, I think
Across the border.
On these kids and, and the teachers have, they've been, uh, trying to, some kids will have lost ground. Some kids will not have. And the same with teachers. It's like, where, where are they? And some of it will be emotional. And social, of course. Some of it will be academic. So there, there's a lot of factors at play there. And, and that's what I think you have to find out where you are before you can decide where you're going to go. Now, certainly there's fair funding and all of that, but for the kids.
Just since you said that, right? Um, shameless plug. We have a rally for PA Public Schools coming up, right? Uh, May 15th. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, May 15th. Um, it's going to be starting at 10 AM at Victory Field, going to, uh, Ben's Park, right? And we're going to have a slew of amazing speakers from students to parents to educators to, yeah, it's, it's, it's about that. So when you see the flyer, share the flyer, tell people about it. Our schools are overcrowded and underfunded. I'm tired of saying that. We need to make a change. And since I said that, there's someone that sits on the board with me, uh, for this, this, uh, this, this rally, right? Jen, how do you feel? What is the first thing you would take care of?
You know, it's really, I'm, I'm glad that you asked that. And, um, you know, I have been working closely with, with you and a number of other parents and educators, former school board members on this topic of equitable funding. It's something that I've been following for, for a number of years. Um, the most recent changes to our laws happened around 2016. I think I started to, to like be volatile, follow, pay attention, excuse me. Um, it's probably around 2013. Um, and, uh, it's, it's really been an interesting thing to, to watch and now to help, um, engage and mobilize families around because our school district has, um, like many others, we, we have, we have, um, found a grit. We have found a resilience in trying to, to take up the slack and give all of our students what they need to meet their basic needs and then also to, to make these strides academically. And I think that the fair funding piece is the greatest way that we can systemically address how we fund, that all of our students are equitably educated because we have the resources to do so, to reduce the class sizes, to make sure we have enough teachers, to recruit teachers that look more like our students and also to spend time, then, um, you know, really assessing what's working. And I think that that happens, you know, on levels. But there's a moment of integration right now that I'm really seeing that is so important and I think will be really transformative. And, um, you know, I want to, I want to also piggyback on what, what Molly has said. Um, I've been talking about equity in education. I fully support the Equity Design Plan that's being, has been developed and, um, I would like to see that developed with, um, implemented with fidelity. And, you know, I'd also like to make sure that we go back to that boundary study issue and we look at the walkability. We look at, um, what some of the, the costs to our students are by our current boundaries. And now that we know that wireless technology, if available, if working, can mean we don't need the bricks and mortar. So what does all this mean for our students? And, um, at the same time, I'm hearing some of our teachers saying we're tired. You know, we'd always 10% more, 10% more. I'm going to reflect that something that Dave said to me when we were walking in this weekend. But they're concerned. They're concerned about the students that they're not seeing show up on their Zooms. They're concerned about, um, recovery. Um, and, and like, is it good for our mental health just to plow forward? Like there's some healing that has to happen and how do we address the mental health needs? And, and I want to echo that as something that I was really glad to hear about in last Tuesday's board meeting, that there was a bit of pushback like, hey, like I don't see enough of this. We have to address this going forward. Our students learn best when they're cared for, when they're supported, and there's just too much that needs to happen.
Thank you for that. You said a mouthful. I just wanted to say this real quick. Isn't ironic how we got all these brand new buildings? All our schools are getting rebuilt and now we realize we barely need them. Mara, please tell us, talk to us.
Sure. Um, you know, I know we're not supposed to say pandemic because I think that's on everybody's mind, right? Uh, we, you know, but, but I do think recovering what Jen said, and, and I did do some pushback last week. When we were presented with a preliminary plan, we have this money coming in from the federal government. It's, you know, $69 million. And I think about eight million of it is very specific how we have to spend it. So we, you know, we've got an amazing, So, we, you know, we've got an amazing, uh, opportunity here. But our number one priority is what we've just been through and taking a little piece of what Molly said, assessing where everybody is, but mostly, um, assessing, you know, everybody's, um, emotional state and how can we support staff and teachers and kids? Um, yeah, I'd say that's absolutely priority number one. I'm going to throw something else out there that I don't think a lot of people would think about that. Uh, people who are on the board with me have heard, heard me talk about, um, a personal thing that I'd really like to see in the next four years is a priority on student voice in the district. I think we don't do a good job listening to kids and asking kids what they need. And, and I think you can ask kids from tiny all the way to twelfth grade, and they can be involved in what happens to them. You know, stuff is done to kids. It's not, um, we don't do a great job asking them. We don't have a student council at the high school right now. Um, we could just do so many creative, amazing things with our amazing kids. Um, and we really need to figure out ways to, um, involve them in everything we do. I think it is obviously a, a matter of equity. Their, their voice needs to be heard.
I can't believe there's not a student council.
That's, I mean, you, you also got to keep in mind of this, this The pandemic has
Yeah.
affected a lot of things. Can I, can I, since we're on the topic, we have some amazing comments that I just got a chance to, to tap in with. Um, Corinne Hill, what's going on, Corinne Hill? She says, my daughter's a freshman this year. She, oh, she was always an A and B honor student and started failing almost all of her classes. When and how should their teachers be communicating with parents when this happens? I feel that if our cha, our children can't be in the classroom learning, their education has become second and third priority to their teachers. They are most definitely overcrowded and underfunded. And our children are feeling those effects most during this time. So does anybody want to chime in on that at all? If you'd like to. Hey, Molly, you're muted if you'd like to.
I know I'm muted, but it, I feel like, uh, David hasn't spoken and, 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 and Louis hasn't spoken about their first, the first
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. You guys definitely can answer the first question.
Sorry about that. So I'll mute myself again.
Well, I, I think my answer probably, um, addresses kind of both, uh, that comment and, and my answer. And it's just to, uh, highlight something that Mara said, that perhaps one of the most important days in the district in the medium term was January sixth of this year, uh, when shout out to, uh, Stacey Abrams and Warnock and Ossoff. They won in Georgia. And what that yielded is, uh, net about sixty-seven million dollars for the district. That's roughly like a third of operating cost. That's a lot of money that we get to spend. Now, it doesn't fix the fair funding problem because we have it only for a very short period of time. But it does enable us to address in the medium term some of these, um, problems that people have been highlighting and invest in social emotional health and think about analyzing where our students are and investing in our students. And I'll say like, one thing I think I would really advocate for using that money, and this is where I think it would address that, that, that comment is, um, I would like to have a system where we start to, uh, grow our own and support our own teachers from in our district. So I know we have a lot of people like Dom who work in the district, um, but maybe want to become teachers. And if we can figure out over the next three to four years, how to support them with some of that money to becoming teachers, then we're growing our own teachers. And then the teachers who are in our schools are people who grew up in this community and know our students rather than us going to the outside and like trying to hire teachers. Because the best people to teach our students are people who grew up in this community and went to our schools. And if we can support them in becoming teachers over this next three to four years, um, that would be a big hit. And that would, so I think that would start to address some of that, uh, disconnect that, that your, the commenter was, was, um, was mentioning.
Hey, y'all, if you're watching, we hiring. Just saying, check the district page, we hiring. Louis, talk to us, brother.
Well, I'd say for, for something that I believe in is in supporting not just the student, but the family and supporting them at home. Um, because, just because we do the learning and the teaching in a school doesn't mean that it just stops the moment three fifteen hits or two forty-five hits. You know, there has to be carry on at home, you know, from school, carry it on at home. And, you know, that's how we develop these young great minds to rise up and, you know, and become their best selves. Um, but then also supporting that family to be able to get that carry, carry out at home. Um, you know, it, this is something that I've learned from, from having kids going through, uh, you know, occupational therapy and all that. They always stress, oh, you know, we're teaching this here at the center, but you need to carry this over at home because, you know, it just doesn't stop. So, you know, it's a great, it's a great mentality to have just overall, you know, supporting our families would be able to help support the kids overall. You know, their mental state, you know, their educational state, social state. You know, if we can support that and carry it over from school to home and back, you know, that will great, will provide a stable life, you know, for them to help bring that up, you know, and, and it might help with, you know, advancing that learning. They don't have to worry about, hey, if there, is there food at home? Or, you know, something's happening at home. They don't have to worry about what's happening outside of school and they can focus in school. The same thing, they don't have to worry about what's going on in school. If they're failing grades, not doing so well, you know, and then they carry that at home. They're not focusing on what needs to be going on at home. You know, and it just, it balances that, that out. So that's kind of where I'm, what, where I would start. Once you get that stable at home, you can get stable at school. And, and it just carries up and just.
That's a nice slogan, brother. I ain't going to lie, I like that. I like that. Um, I did want to read one more comment, Nina, for the next question. Uh, shout out to Karina Rio. She said, school board meetings are open to the public. Our meetings are live streamed every first, second, third Tuesday of the month. What time are your meetings usually from?
On the first two Tuesdays, they start at six thirty. And our regular school board meeting, which is that, that third Tuesday, they start at seven PM.
Okay. And usually they end about what time?
Depends on what's on the agenda. Sometimes four hours. You know, actually, the really interesting thing about that is, if you really want to know what we're doing, um, watching those first two meetings of the month are really where the work gets done. We have a lot of great conversation, a lot of great presentations. Um, those are long. Um, but the third meeting is our really formal. We vote on things. And I think if someone were to watch that one, they would maybe not get a complete idea of what it is that we do. So I always encourage people to watch our, they're called COW meetings, Committee of the Whole Meetings. Um, that's, uh, but they're really, really good. But yeah, they can be long, but you know what? You can always watch them afterwards, too. You can, so they record them and save them. And that's a
Beauty of technology.
Yeah.
Definitely. Nina, let's get that next question.
You guys ready to turn up the dial a little bit?
Turn it up, we need some heat.
Well, this next question was actually inspired by social media. The question is, who should be responsible for buying student school supplies? A, parents? B, teachers? Or C, the school?
I love this question. While, while you think about it, I would just give everybody a chance to think. This, this came via a topic of a, a teacher friend of mine. He posted about how, you know, a lot of our students, especially from the population that we work with, might come to school with the freshest kicks, two hundreds to six hundred dollars worth of sneakers.
On their feet, eight hundred, you know, eighty dollar backpacks.
No pencil, no folder in that backpack, right? Is that on, is that on our community? Is that on our parents? A lot of our teachers are coming out of pocket for school supplies and our kids aren't, are still aren't prepared. Also, you know, we, we, I mean, kids are required to go to school. Parent didn't say you had to go to school unless they, the, the school said we got to go to school. Well, I guess the government said we got to go to school, right? Um, so who's really at fault here? Who was in charge? We want to bring some clarity to this conversation.
The state government and our local property tax laws.
When you talk about supplies for the school, you're talking about school supplies. You're not talking about.
Yes, we're talking about
School supplies.
Okay, well, I, I think the school should be doing that. Um, I know my, my, I taught in a high school, an urban school in Virginia, in Hampton, Virginia. And, um, it was a, a poor school. Students were very poor. And, um, there wasn't the pressure though, but, uh, no, I think the school's responsible for the supplies. And, uh, that's not always easy for the school because they have to spend the money so many places, but.
Okay, I want to take a small, I want to take a small vote of what answer A, B, or C is, you know, agreed upon the most. A, parents? B, teachers? C, the school? And you chose the school.
But listen, I can't speak to two hundred, eight hundred dollar shoes. Um, I don't believe it's my place to judge. And I don't necessarily know how a person comes by what they have. And everybody should be entitled to have nice things. It's not my place. Um, it's a hard, it's a hard dissonance when you hold the two. But I think that we can, we can hold two truths at one time and they both are still true. You know, um, and, and I think that, you know, I remember as a kid, we, we went with supplies, but it was, it was supplement to support what we needed. It wasn't what we needed. It wasn't, you don't have your supplies if you don't bring them from home. And the, the, the supply lists increase. And they're different from school to school. Some schools choose to use part of their budgets for folders and some ask the PTO for lots of money for folders. Um, you know, it kind of, it, it, there's a lot of, that's why I'm not going to, it's not an easy, like, this person's at fault. I think that there's a lot of, there, it's like everything, there's a lot of nuance, but we can all
And now time's changed. Now everything is null and void. We don't even need a pencil or, or a folder. Now we need chargers and, uh, uh, what are these little things that the kids write with on their iPad? I can't even remember what it's called.
Stylist is.
Stylist, we need a stylist, a engraved stylist. You pull up with it, man, look, it's crazy out here, y'all. Does anybody else like to answer that question?
Do you think the parents or the school should be responsible?
I still think that's the school's responsibility, especially in our Pennsylvania constitution where they are supposed to fairly inadequately supply for our students. It's, it's not even an adequacy issue when we've got the next zip code over kids who have something completely different. Their enrollment numbers are different, their, their income, um, their party, property tax incomes, the things that support their budgets are very, very different.
David, what do you think?
I'll tell you, you should not be responsible is the kids, right? Like, the kids didn't make whatever frame you're coming at this with. When the kid shows up in the classroom, when the student shows up in the classroom, they should have the materials they need to succeed in that classroom, right? Absolutely, at that moment. And it should not be on the teacher to supplement with their, their pay to, to provide those, those goods. Now, whether we want to say that falls on the school to supply some sort of like minimum level, I think we should strive to be more than that minimum level with what we're supplying our students. Um, and make sure that all the students have equal supplies, right? We don't want some of our s- schools getting more supplies than some of our, our other schools. So I would, again, come down on, 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 on C as a matter of equity, that we need to be supplying our students equally across the board. And we should absolutely not be pointing at the students and holding them responsible because they're not the ones that are, that, that are making those choices at this moment. So we need to supply them with what they need in the classroom. You know, they're not responsible for fair funding. They're the one, they're not the ones who voted in the system that overfunds other districts, not our funds ours. Like, that's not their fault. And so we need to make sure that they have those supplies.
Anisha, do you, do you want to take a vote here?
Parents. I'm going to agree with C. I'm going to go, I'm going to go ahead and agree with C.
Okay, the school?
Yeah. If the school's responsible for your education and not completely, even though they're not completely responsible for your education, it just doesn't make any sense for them not to be able to supply pencils and paper and any other supplies for that matter, especially, like he said, times are changing. And now you need a stylist, a charger and an iPad. And are you going to tell me that the poorest family from each school can afford those particular things? So then you're telling me that that kid shouldn't be educated? And it, it's the same thing. It's the same thing for the other supplies. I look at whether it's the technical supplies or whether it's the office supplies. I look at it the same thing. Are you telling me that kid shouldn't be educated because they don't have supplies?
Well, I don't mean to, to jump in, I'm sorry, but I want to piggyback.
No, that's okay.
We went to the school district of Lancaster and we grew up with schools that were held together with duct tape and outdated books and jerseys from another generation. And our kids deserve better.
The fact that that is still happening, like, I hope everybody understands that, that is watching it. Like, we're all on the same page here. Everybody on the call is, and hope the viewers at home understand this. Like, we have schools that are still falling apart. We have, uh, information that is, sorry, go ahead, Nina, go ahead, my bad.
Um, after we, after we get Lu, uh, Mr. Morales's vote, we got to go to the comments.
Oh, yeah, it's on fire, I see it, I got you.
Well, I'll, I'll say the school, you know, as a parent with four kids, that gets a little expensive having to supply, you know, your supplied crayons and notebooks and, you know, all of that for four kids, you know? And some of our families have more than four kids. You know, some of them are blended families. Some of them, you know, are, you know, they have grandma, grandpa living in there and then they have their cousins living in there because that's just the situation. And that gets expensive for, you know, bigger families and even smaller families too, you know? Who, who has, you know, I mean, it, it all adds up. You have to buy uniforms, you have to buy notebooks, you have to buy pencils. You have to buy, you know, the book bag to go, to hold all that stuff together. And sure, you know, there's always drives, giving stuff out, you know, to help out, but, you know, that doesn't always last. And, you know, I have young kids. They break their stuff within the first, you know, two months. You know, they're dragging it, they're throwing it all around and, you know, crayons don't stay together. So now you have to go buy a whole new pack of crayons by the first month of school. That's another five bucks for a pack of crayons. Like, it, it gets expensive after a while.
You know what's weird? If you go to Target right now, the Leaf Frog section is full of stuff. We got, all these kids got these iPads and couldn't just use the Leaf Frog? I don't know. I'm just kidding. But hey, we do got a ton of comments. Let me read some of these comments real quick, y'all. Corinne Hill says, I keep hearing their priority regarding the success of our students. Uh, academia and mentally, why wasn't this priority, where was this priority last year when this first started? Um, the Go Goose Party, Tony Dastre here. As a student, I sometimes felt like a prop. My grades and achievements were more important than my well-being. It's encouraging to hear we want to give students more of a voice, but it has to be substance, substantial and it has to, has to regard for one voice among the many. Also, thank you for live streaming your meetings. Um, there we go. Nicole Vasquez, what's up, Nicole Vasquez? She says, Jen for school board. Um, we have a ton of people that said school. They all agree, school, C, school. Um, Creisha Martzow, she says, are candidates supporting the fair funding movement? And if so, how are they actively participating? That's a great question.
I'll go. Um, one of the most important things that a person does on school board, and it's not fun and it's sort of stressful, but it is advocating for the district with our other elected officials. And, you know, in our situation, the people we, uh, we interact with, and Representative Sterling is, of course, very, very supportive of, uh, funding for our district. But in Lancaster County, he's pretty much the only one. Um, uh, Scott Martin is actually head of the Senate Education Committee. Um, and Ryan Allman is very, uh, involved with those. So the thing you have to do as a school board member is you have to get really involved and you have to be brave and you have to call their office and you have to set up appointments and talk to them. Um, we're lucky because Pennsylvania School Board Association, it's a great voice for school board members, um, in Harrisburg and they help us out a lot and they, uh, set up opportunities. But, um, yeah, the, the, the big thing we have to do is we are representatives of the district to those people and we have to have our voices be heard. And, um, no matter how many times they say no, we have to keep, uh, keep, keep coming. I know I talked to somebody today who said, uh, everybody needs to call those guys. I said, you know, I should probably live at their houses at this point because of all the things that I need to nag them about. Um, but it's true. That's what, that's what our job is. That's a big part of our job is advocating for SDL and fair funding. And that is number one priority, that and charter school funding reform. Those are two huge issues that have to be taken and fair funding and that is number one priority, that and charter school funding reform. Those are two huge issues that have to be taken care of.
A- and to piggyback on all that, you know, at at our meetings, you know, we we strive to educate, you know, we just had the presentation uh, two weeks ago on the fair funding and the status of the the fair funding lawsuit that this district is part of. You know, and just getting that word out there, not only for us advocating with those representative, but ever, you know, educating the public out there, you know, through our live stream meetings, through the meeting itself. Um, also that, a lot of that material is available just to look at later on. Um, as a, I I think they have it as a PowerPoint presentation on the board box. Um, website that contains, you know, a lot of our meeting material uh, right before the meeting, you can see, you know, what we're seeing um, at the meeting. So getting that out, that information out there, just spreading it out and then, you know, sharing it on, you know, Facebook, you know, all everything that's going on. Um, and just keep educating. It's what we can do.
This is exactly why local elections are so important. Everybody loves the excitement of the presidential or even the governor's race. But it is the local races for state house and state senate that impact your daily life. And this is what you're all saying is exactly true, that it is the P A state representatives minus Sterling who just uh, dig in their heels and say, no, 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 and dump it back on the local population instead of doing their job that they are supposed to be doing by the state constitution's mandate. They ignore it to fund schools, uh, the public schools as they should. And so it gets dumped back on the local property owners. Um, and in the school district of Lancaster situation, it's a double whammy because you have so many tax exempt properties. Um, so anyway, that's why, why you need to get out and vote uh, in local elections. There's crucial because this is your day to day life and your your families and your children's that are in in the mix with this one. So vote.
And to to answer the commenters question, I think there's like three things that school board members do that are really important. The first is, uh, and this was before me, but the school district of Lancaster chose to vote and join the legal suit. So there's like this legal path that is suing this state for that money. And that was really important. I think we were one of the first, we were not the first, but we were one of the first to join that lawsuit. That was a really important. Number two, yeah. The second is for us as schooler members, uh, like, and shout out to uh, Karina, who's on the school board, who does this really well. Like, keep talking to the state legislators all the time and saying, do this. And so that's the second one. But the third is exactly what you you're doing, Dom, which is like put bodies in the street. Like, sometimes change doesn't happen unless you put bodies in the street. And so like, all three things have to be done by those who are advocating for the for the the school board, like the legal front, the advocating is the legislator, and then putting bodies in the street and saying, this is not right, this is not fair, and we want justice for our kids. And that, and all three of those things have to be done so that we can get the fair funding.
Shameless plug, pull up to the rally, May fifteenth. It's hard to say that. You really doubt it. Here on Hip Hop and Politics, we we got this hashtag. I love to use this hashtag. We catch it on the shirt near you. Hashtag what that
What that impact do?
What that impact do? If you're not standing in the gap, if you're not willing to change the narrative, if you're just letting it flow how it's been flowing, then you really don't care about your community or the future of these young people. I do, everyone on this call does, everyone watching, I'm pretty sure you do too. So make sure you share the stream. We appreciate y'all. Um, we actually are almost out of time, guys. We are sadly.
I hope you guys got, I hope the viewers got to really get to know some of the candidates tonight. Some of them are, I hope by the end of this show, they're no longer strangers. You're a little bit more familiar with what their agenda is and what their intentions are for the school district and the children learning in it. Um, I hope, I hope anyone that had questions got to ask them. And anything that our candidates would like our viewers to know, they share.
Definitely. I I do want to give everyone a a chance, thirty second blurb. If there's something that you want to get off your chest, please do so, as well as let people know where they can contact you for, if they have other questions, if they have other uh, other things on their mind and how they can support you further in this campaign. Anybody, floor is yours.
But we're all muted to let you guys talk.
This is, this is about y'all. Cut us off. Cut us off.
I think I I would, I'd like to let people know about me. Um, I decided it was time to lean in because I've been given so much by this district. And I've watched what it has given and how it has been undersold for so long. And you know, when you've been given a lot, what do they say with with a long? Hmm, I'm gonna mess this up. With great something comes responsibility. I'm sure that, I think you know what I mean.
Shout out to Uncle Ben on Spider-Man. With great power comes great responsibility. I got you. I got you.
Thank you. Thank you. And 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 I just, it's so important to 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 give to give back. I I've I've said it pretty clearly. I think that our kids deserve better. Um, I'm listening and um, I think it is really important to to listen and presence ourself in the community um, and its leaders when they tell us what they need and um, to listen, to bridge, to mobilize, amplify and just keep showing up. And um, I am really grateful for this opportunity. Thank you, Nina and Dom. I'm really grateful for all of um, my fellow candidates who are stepping up and also leaning in, um, because we do have such incredible people here. We have incredible talent, brainpower, educators, parents, um, community leaders and um, we're gonna make some great things happen.
Thank you.
Well, to throw our own plug in, uh, you know, we we we're on Facebook. We have a Facebook page, the Democrat for school, school district of Lancaster. Um, you can, you know, there you can see, but you know, we share stuff, well, of the school district, fair funding page, we're always sharing stuff. Um, you can definitely hit comments in there and ask questions there. Um, at least for the the three of us who are on the board, our emails are on the district website. You can find us there and, you know, send any, you know, questions or concerns you have to our district email. Um, and we get, you know, forward those concerns to the right people and get you the answers you need.
That's how change happens. Denisha, I see it brewing. Talk to us.
I don't have a board email or anything, but you can reach me on Facebook or through Messenger and I will share my regular personal email. If anyone has any questions or anything they would like to ask me at all, even my telephone number, because I would much rather talk on the phone than send messages because it drives me a little bit crazy, but I'm all for it, seeing that I'm running for school board. Um, I really don't have anything much else to give. I'm gonna be pushing as much information as I can on my Facebook page for you guys. I am not currently endorsed by the Democratic or the Republican Party, so more than likely, as long as I am voted in through this particular election, I will be able to be on both ballots, hopefully. Um, but that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Molly, go ahead. It's all yours.
Well, there's, there's so much to say and so much I've heard tonight that I'm ve- really excited about. And I want to talk to David about growing our own teachers. Um, because I have an idea. Anyway, um, I think I possess the temperament and experience to be on the school board. Um, with the, particularly now with my background in public health and education, I look forward to serving uh, the community some more. And and we have so much to work with. We we have resilient students. We have families that care. We have a community that's involved and needs to be more involved, but there's a lot we have to work with. And uh, and we just go forward and and see where we are and and be optimistic and hopeful. I thi- I think we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
I like that energy, growth mindset. I love growth mindset. We gotta grow together, y'all. Floor is yours.
Um, gosh, I guess I would just say that, you know, s- serving on school board for the past four years has been definitely the best job, the best honor I've ever had, serving the community. And that's what this is. This is a job where you serve the community. And it's complicated and it's messy and it's a slow moving organization because it's huge and there's so many different parts, but it's something we all do together. And you know, that's, that's the school district slogan. And I think we've kind of taken that on in our, in our campaign together we can. And I think that's really, really true. Uh, but you've got to hear everyone's voices and you've got to uh, represent everybody. And that's what you do on school board. You represent the entire community, not just your own family or uh, your own neighborhood. So um, I'm looking forward to serving another four years. I I hope I get the opportunity. Uh, you know, working with Dave and Louis has been fantastic. Um, Louis hit the ground running in July. We just threw him in and it's been fantastic. And uh, you know, S D L has probably um, the most progressive and um, philosophically aligned, you know, all nine of us. There's not much we uh, disagree on. And that, I think, is a really powerful thing. And in this group to- today too, I mean, you know, there are a lot of other school boards where people don't agree on really basic things. Um, I think we all agree on most everything. And let's see how we can, we can harness that and and move forward together.
David, Louis, either one of you guys? Well, Louis already went. David, floor is yours.
Um, I think I'm with like, uh, one of my friends said, uh, it was a while ago. It was like, defend what you love, like spend time defending what you love. And I think that's what the last four years has been about. I really valued my time in the school board. I deeply value public education, as like I said at the beginning. And although it is a lot of work, it is many hours on a Tuesday, as many other hours during the week, reading things. Um, I really value it because public education is incredibly important. I think it's like one of the most important public institutions we have in this country. And over the last four years, I think we've taken steps to addressing some of the challenges that our students face, but there's a lot more. And I think there's a lot of work left to be done that I'd like to take on for the next four years. And then I'll also just close by plugging the Fair Funding Rally because that's probably along with the the uh, money that we're getting from the the federal government, probably the two most important things that we do for this district. Because once we have money, then we can choose to spend it equitably and help all of our students. But the Fair Funding Rally is gonna be really important for that. So I will plug that again for uh, Dom.
Thank you for that, sir. And not for nothing, since we're on Hip Hop and Politics, one of my favorite artists, he's a local phenom. He had a great episode here with us a few weeks ago. My man, Tyrion Mack is actually performing. Yeah, I dropped a mic on y'all. Tyrion Mack's performing at the Fair Funding Rally. It's about to be lit. I ain't gonna lie. And we, I don't even know if I could tell people who else is, can I tell them, Jen? Who else we got?
Sharing, it's a good
We got the McCaskey drum line. Come on now, guys.
Months, public appearance.
I'm in six months. We got the McCaskey, this is important. Us funding our schools equitably is important. Alright, so I'm just excited. My bad, I I be getting hyped. I be getting real hyped. But we appreciate y'all. We appreciate everybody at home watching. Please share the she, uh, share the stream, share the stream, share the stream. Tell a friend to tell a friend. Tap in with these school board candidates. And the most important thing, right, before anything, even outside of just this episode, vote, y'all. We have the most people registered to vote ever, ever, in the history of this country. Vote, y'all. Your voice matters. I'm excited. I love y'all. We appreciate y'all. Um, Nina, you got any final words?
Thanks for listening and thanks for watching.
You ain't gotta go home, but you gotta get up out of here. Peace.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night, y'all. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.